I'll call the meeting in the city council to order at 6:05 PM. Councilman Kaisler, would you like to introduce the flag?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
And now we have a roll call.
Councilmember Art.
Here.
Councilmember Doish.
Here.
Councilmember Kaisler.
Here.
Councilmember Lukeyezi.
President.
Mayor Bryan.
President.
Tonight, we have two special presentations. First is a virtual presentation by Retail Strategies LLC.
Yeah, so if you're able to unmute, I don't know who you are, I haven't met you yet, but you have been talking with Todd. And just for everybody's knowledge, this is kind of in relation to a CBG planning grant where this is a potential person that would be like a potential contractor to help with economic revitalization.
Is Todd not with us tonight?
And Todd cannot be here, yeah. Fortunately, he was, he's out due to unforeseen circumstances, so yeah, he won't be here.
All right, good, good evening, everyone. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if I can share my screen here. I don't know if I can get access, and I apologize, this background's making me look weird, but hey, check out, check me out. But I'll give you a little background while I'm waiting to share my screen here. My name is Matthew Tate, I'm a director of business development on the West Coast. I'm from Northern California, you'll see that in one of our slides here, but Todd and I have been in conversation a little bit over the past four or five months, just about our services, about what we do. Truth be told, I drive the entire state of California a lot. I look at I-5 as a big, a big draw to retail and what we do, and that's what initially led me to reach out to Todd. I thought there might be some opportunity to put some, I guess you could call low hanging fruit type of retail in your community. And once Todd and I got in conversation, it was very clear that that's not necessarily what he's after. He'd like, he's got a great vision and great plan, and after talking with some of you, he made, he made that very clear to us. So, so what we're gonna, and I still can't share my screen, I don't know if someone can give me access. But what we're gonna talk about tonight, myself, I'm gonna spend about ten minutes here talking about our retail recruitment, where we actually work on behalf of the city to go out to, to talk to national retailers leveraging data and analytics, plus the input from the community of what type of retail would you like to see here? And then we actually go out and proactively do that outreach as well. Jen Gregory, who's joining me, is our president of Downtown Strategies. And so what I do, focusing on the national retail, the corridors and the kind of the arteries, the veins, if you will, in order to increase sales tax revenue. Jen focuses on the heart of a community, the heart, as we all know, is the downtown. That's what makes remote workers look at a new, you know, maybe secondary tertiary market to them in the past to say, wow, this place has look and feel and a vibe and somewhere that I like to call home. And so we do that through a program that Jen has put in place in her own professional use, and we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit as well. I now have the ability to share, so let me know if you guys can, can see my presentation here.
Yep.
Okay, Jen's giving me the nod, all right. So again, Todd asked us to keep this as brief as possible, but please understand that there's a lot of information, but we just, we really want to be fair of your time. So I'm gonna go ahead and, and get through my handful of slides. I think the best thing to do would be if you have any questions for my portion, to write them down, then I'm gonna pass it to Jen, same thing, and then we can answer any questions at the end as a way to move forward. But we'll just jump right into it. Again, I've been doing this for, for close to ten years now, I'm a native of Rockland, California. If you know Rockland, down in the Roseville area. Obviously, thoughts and prayers to everyone out there with, you know, the fire dangers. I know last I talked to Todd, that it was pretty intense there in Dunsmere. We also work with the city of Colfax, who is, they were evacuating last night around 10:30. So, you know, we're, we're with you in thoughts and just hopeful that everyone stays safe. But as I mentioned, I'm from the West Coast, Retail Strategies based out of Birmingham, Alabama. They brought me on essentially to start having conversations with cities on the West Coast. And in the last two years, we brought on about fifteen cities from Colfax, the size, you know, right around 2,000 people, all the way up to Palmdale, California with 160,000 people. Every city that we work with has a unique want, desire, need in, in national retail recruitment. And some just wanna go to the nearest cool downtown near them and say, man, we'd like one of those pizza places or whatever. We help with everything in between. It's one thing, Todd's an extremely sharp guy, he's, he's very talented, but what, what happens a lot of times, why we exist, I'll, I'll talk about that here in, in just a second as well. I do wanna also mention Jen Gregory has been doing this for ten years. She was actually the CEO of, of a downtown organization in Starkville, Mississippi. And she literally turned Starkville into what is now considered one of the culinary destinations of the South. She's also a big Mississippi State baseball fan, and they're the college world series champs, so I'm forced to acknowledge that every time we talk as well. But Jen is in Starkville as well, home of those champions. So what we do, I mentioned, kind of, we'll, we'll talk first about the retail recruitment side. You know, I, I'd love to ask this question and, and see what everyone thinks, but could you tell me, anybody, what is the current population of Dunsmere?
It's about 2,200.
About 2,200, is that what you said?
Yeah.
And could you make a guess of what the current population out of fifteen minutes would be?
You know, in the, in the, like a fifteen minute driving radius?
Correct, correct.
Approximately 14,000 to 15,000.
Okay, okay. So this is exactly why we exist, right? We buy, we start out by buying a national data set that national retailers use, retailers like CVS, Walgreens, you know, Kohl's, folks like that, they buy this data in order to first understand where they should expand across the country. We work with retailers like that, leveraging the data that they use to tell the story of Dunsmere. The best thing that I can say to, to wrap up who we are, we are the national experts. You, you and your community, you are the local experts. We are going to, you're gonna forget more about Dunsmere than we're, we're ever gonna learn. But what happens is we go to trade shows, we call retailers, we talk to them and tell them their story, or your story, that, that resonates with their ears. A lot of times, cities will get in front of a national retailer, and they'll tell them about their splash pads, they'll tell them about their school district, stuff like that, that the retailer's gonna smile and nod and say, hey, this is, this is really nice. But at the end of the day, what they wanna hear is we have X amount of cars a day on I-5, we have a drive time population of this, of, of X. They don't wanna hear that you're a town of 2,200, their data actually suggests that you're about 1,589. So one thing I'm gonna walk through here and show you is, is how we tell your story in a different way. So why we exist, there's all kinds of different goals in economic development, and there's all kinds of different challenges. Obviously, every city that we work with wants to increase their sales tax revenue. They wanna, they wanna increase job creation, quality of life in new businesses. And so there's challenges with resources, with the know-how, who to talk to, all kinds of different, all kinds of different challenges arise, and that's why we exist. We have contacts with retailers all across the country, we have contacts with retailers right up and down Northern California that are looking to do deals and looking to expand. And so it's one thing if a skilled guy like Todd picks up the phone and calls XYZ retailer, but then what do you say once you get them on the phone? And how do you get them to understand that you're not just a community of 1,500 or 2,200? That's where we come in. So why we exist, a little bit further expanded, this is what we call a retail recruitment ladder. What this is showing is where these retailers fall if we're able to land a retailer of this caliber. This is assuming a 1%, the, the far right column is assuming a 1% sales tax base back to the city. And so if you're able to land a Starbucks, for example, that's worth about $10,000 annually if that retailer performs on average. All the way up to a Target, a Target is worth 300 jobs, but it's also worth $400,000 a year annually. And so this is another example of why we exist. Now, you might say, well, these aren't quality jobs, these aren't primary jobs, these aren't, you know, the, the types of industrial jobs that, that produce high income. They're still jobs that help that CEO who's gonna go anchor that company allow his family the ability to get their first jobs and pay their car payments and stuff like that, right? So while retail jobs are not usually the first, most primary source of, of attraction for a community, they also do pay dividends as well. Our, our method is simple, it's three steps, we do what we call discover, connect, and advance. So essentially, we want to learn your story. I've been learning the story a little bit about Dunsmere through Todd in some of our conversations, but there's a lot more to learn. So we do that through our market research, which I'll, I'll cover on the next slide. Then we're gonna connect, we wanna make sure your community's story is heard. So it's one thing for us to learn your story, but you guys need storytellers, you need someone to go out and tell the story of Dunsmere on your behalf. And not just because we're looking to bring in any type of retail, but Todd made it very clear, you're looking to bring in a certain type of retail, a certain quality of retail that really benefits that, maybe that traveler up to the snow or up to Mount Shasta, something that pulls them off and gets them interested in coming to your downtown or your city to stay a little bit longer and spend some money while they're there. Those are the types of things that we wanna do, is get in front of our contacts and tell them the story of Dunsmere. So that research and, and real estate analysis is, is really what we do through the discovery phase. There's all kinds of different tools that we're gonna use, from trade area identification, which we kind of talked about, the, the fifteen minute drive time versus just population, but we get even further than that, and I'll cover that on the next slide. We, we use what we call a gap analysis, I'm gonna show you actually some of the gap categories that you have in your market. A gap is literally looking at the categories of retail, where people are leaving your city in order to transact by category and how much sales tax dollars we're leaving on the table. And then we, we use things like a tapestry segmentation as well, tapestry or psychographic analysis. This is how people live their lives and spend their money. It's one thing to look at a market demographically and be able to tell a retailer, we have this much population, we make, we have this much income. It's a whole nother to say, you know what, we've got the type of customers that like to go to XYZ retailer, and they're in our market. And that's what psychographics do, we measure how people live their lives and spend their money so that we can make sure that those retailers understand that their customer base would be in your market. So I, I kind of trapped some of you, asking you what, what the size, what the population of your market is. I mentioned that the, the database that we have has it right around 1,500, 1,500 to 2,200, doesn't make much of a difference to a retailer. But what does make a difference is, is something like this, a customized trade area. So this customized trade area I ran today, it's looking at August 20, August of 20 to August of 2021 from Dunsmere supermarket. And what we did here is we put a, an imaginary polygon, if you will, around the Dunsmere supermarket. And every cell phone over the past 12 months that entered into that trade area, we traced back to their home location. That's the map you can see on the left. Now, we're not taking and selling this data, using this for any, anything creepy. What we're doing is we're trying to understand, what is the true trade area, what is the true market area for Dunsmere, right? And so when we start to draw this custom trade area around this, around this, the home locations of these cell phones, we're able to start seeing that this is actually 28,000 people live within this, this polygon, this shape here. And the average household income is up to 67,000 versus the 43,000 in the city population. So your income goes up about 24,000 as well. Now, we know that not all 30,000, approximately 30,000 of these people are gonna shop in Dunsmere every day, but we do want retailers to know what the true trade area looks like so that we can tell that story, and we could start talking to some of those retailers who, who might be looking at you like you're 15 to 2,200 or something like that. You're a bigger trade area than that, there's bigger dollars and bigger wallets that need to be accounted for. In addition to that, when we look at that gap analysis that I mentioned, on the left side, the consumer supply and demand, these are actual numbers inside that custom trade area. So building and supply, there's a $15 million leakage. So customers are leaving this trade area, that custom trade area, at the tune of $15 million to buy their lumber, to buy their, to improve their homes, whatever that might be. Furniture, general merchandise, food and, food, food service, all four of these categories are, are pretty good leakages. And so these are some areas where if we're gonna dive in and say, you know, what do the citizens need, or what, what do the residents of this area need, these are, these are where their dollars are telling us there's, there's leakages. The other thing that we do is we, we care, you can, you can want and desire and need building and supply, but if you don't have home run real estate, it's gonna be hard for us to have conversations with those retailers. So when we come to your market, after we've done our, our market research, we also wanna do a property analysis. So we come to your market, we do what we call a boots-on-the-ground tour, and we look at every property that you have, whether it's currently vacant, whether it's a dilapidated building, whether it's a vape shop at the corner of Main and Main that would make a great Jimmy John's. We wanna note all of those things, we look for things like traffic count, co-tenancy, convenience, parking, visibility, ingress egress, accessibility, all those types of things are what we're looking for in the real estate in your market. We then, our team goes back and we call all of your property owners, and we say, hey, what, you know, what's the status of your property? You know, are you looking to lease, are you looking to develop, what are you looking to do? So that we can then go out, like I said, to our contacts, our retailers, and say, hey, we've got a location here on the corner of Main and Main that looks just like a site that you have in Colfax, that, that they want 350,000 for the acre, and we know you just paid 450,000 over here. This, let's put you in touch with the owner, and then they work on having that deal. So that's a little bit about what we do. And in addition to the discover, we then connect. So we go to trade shows on your behalf, obviously, trade shows over the last couple of months were canceled, they are now back full-fledged. December, we have the biggest show in our, our, what we do, and that's called Recon, that's gonna be in Las Vegas. We go to these trade shows in order to extend these conversations that we're having with retailers. Not only extend them, but also introduce new markets that we're working with, et cetera. So a lot of cities in the past would like to go to the ICSD show, the Recon show, but again, they don't know what to say, they don't know what types of conversations to have, what type of data to provide. That's why we believe that let us do that for you, we have relationships already. If not, we can go build them, we can build them leading up to the show, and then we go to these shows, and we have good conversations. So that's our conference and recruitment. Essentially, what we do to advance your community with retailers, we put ourselves in the middle of everything going on in your community. That's our logo there in the middle, we get to know the retailers, the tenant reps, the community leaders, the property owners, developers, and local brokers. And we do everything that we can to, to keep you guys in conversation. There's times where a grocery store might be interested in your market, they go talk to a property owner, they never went to City Hall, that property owner wants way too much money for it, and then the deal falls apart. There's also times where, where we've been involved, where a city might have a chance at a Trader Joe's or an Aldi or something like that, but the property owner and Aldi are $100,000 off. Well, we can go back to the city to say, hey, city, is this something you might wanna consider incentivizing? No problem if you don't, but wanna let you know before this opportunity passes by, right? So that's why we exist on the, on the retail recruitment side, and I'm gonna pass it to Jen now to go ahead and talk about downtown and everything we do there.
Thank you, Matt, and I'm gonna request control of the screen. So just briefly, the other two components of our partnership include downtown revitalization and small business support. So again, we appreciate the opportunity to be before your council today, and I'll just briefly go through our downtown revitalization components of this partnership. And really, our goal is to identify opportunities for placemaking. You know, we know that Dunsmere, let's see, there we go, doesn't have a historic downtown per se, but there are opportunities for applying placemaking techniques that can start creating opportunities for experiences. We know that there's a lot of traffic that comes through your area, and that there's an opportunity for that traffic to stop, have a meal, maybe enjoy some public art, some music, and really enjoy the experiences and the beauty that are in your region of Northern California. And so our, our approach includes these five pillars, very similar to what Matt was talking about with market analysis. We wanna understand what the opportunities are for local-based businesses that might fit in a downtown area or in a town center area. We look at policy opportunities, design, tourism, and really economic vitality so that we can put together a strategic plan, a five-year strategic plan that is not something that will sit on a shelf, but can really be activated with real strategies that can make a difference in your community. We really believe in building relationships with your community members, so when we are putting our strategic plan together, we start off with a visit to your community and meeting with your stakeholders. So the body that we're meeting with today, but also property owners in your community, business leaders, just really movers and shakers so that we can have a collaborative approach to identifying some of these placemaking techniques. You know, we know that a lot of communities are experiencing challenges and differences, specifically as it relates to some of that post-war development. We know that as the interstates and highway system developed, that was good for a lot of communities, but it sort of left behind the locally owned businesses, and it changed the way consumers thought about doing business. Whereas it used to all be centrally located in a downtown area, that has started to grow over the years. But there's a return back to that desire of doing local business and having a positive experience rather than just making a transaction, especially as the millennial consumer group is growing fast. We know that they crave an experience, so it's really never a better time to focus on that. Also wanna mention that, you know, it might seem odd that we're talking about national retail recruitment in the same presentation as we're talking about downtown revitalization and supporting your existing small businesses, but that's by design, you know, we feel like that approach to community development, recruiting national retail to, to boost the sales tax revenue, while, like Matt said, focusing on the heart of your community, that I, you know, what, what makes, what gives it its identity, and really what creates that experience within your downtown or town center, and then supporting your existing local businesses, is really the perfect mix. Walkability is something that's very important to us, and in developing and creating a place where people wanna be, they wanna be able to park their car when they get off the highway and walk to different destinations in a safe environment. And so we put together this walkability assessment for you guys. In that 20-minute walk time that you see in that shaded area, there are some assets, but also some opportunities. And so we've pulled some demographics, and certainly don't have time to go over all of that, but we'll certainly look back at it when we send this over to you. But just a look here at some of our existing, one of our existing partners, and how focusing on walkability, complete streets, really providing opportunities for bikers, walkers, you know, those with disabilities, and of course, the car also is really the perfect, the perfect approach. We have an outline of our scope of services, but essentially, we're putting together that five-year strategic plan that can be implemented beginning immediately. Finally, the third part of our partnership focuses on small business support. We know that prior to the pandemic, over 60% of businesses did not, of small locally owned businesses did not have an online presence, which meant during shutdowns and restrictions because of COVID, those businesses didn't have an ability to connect with their consumers and thus suffered substantially. We also know that small business revenue has declined anywhere from 35 to 45%, depending on the industry within your state. And so there's a real opportunity to provide support to small businesses beyond just financial relief. And that really takes a shape through technical assistance and one-on-one coaching. And so that's what our small business support includes. It's an annual partnership where we work directly with your businesses, retailers, and restaurants to really help them recover, but then not only just survive, but thrive. We wanna help them modernize, get their businesses online, understand that having that brick and mortar presence is critical and, and remains critical to the future of retail, but that they also must be able to connect with their consumers online. And so this partnership includes trainings, training guides, but they're, they're not webinars that someone will just download their live training. So we're truly meeting your business owners, walking them through some of the opportunities, providing accountability through that one-on-one coaching, and then also some hands-on deliverables that they can take, continue that education, and start implementing it so that the business mix in your community really grows and is prepared for the future. So I know we went through a lot of information, I'm gonna toss it back over to Matt, and we'd love to take all of your, and any of your questions that you might have.
Councilman Doish?
Yes, the one, the one concern I have is, I'm listening to it, actually, there are two concerns. One of them is the fact that since right now we're primarily a seasonal tourism place, our, our businesses go through a real tough time from November to March or April, it's kind of a dead period for them. So I'm wondering how, what you could do could rectify or help solve that situation. And then the other one that I have is simply the housing. It's a killer for us because if we had somebody come in and give us new jobs, we wouldn't have a place for them to live. So those are the two concerns that I have.
Sure, I'll take the first question, and then I'll toss the second one over to Matt, if that's okay, and, and you make a great point. We work with a number of communities, sir, that are very much like yours, that, that really depend on that tourism revenue, but also have major seasons that are just extremely slow, and all the more reason why those businesses need to be online. That's really our solution, and we believe that consumers shop year-round. Certainly during the holiday season is a big focus for consumers, and even through COVID, that holiday shopping grew. And so part of our small business support outline and our platform includes an entire quarter, you know, out of the year, a focus on preparing for the holidays. And so for your businesses, that would look a little bit different, you know, rather than having curbside pickup for locals, we'd really be talking to them about how to spread that message beyond, you know, how to reach consumers and tourists from previously that visited them in some of the peak tourism seasons, how to reengage them. How, and, and social media is the perfect way to do that, e-newsletters, really having that omnichannel presence so that those families and folks that shopped with them maybe in the summer would be compelled to purchase from them again and have their goods shipped rather than picking up in person.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I'll just add that, that, you know, we're, we're very strategic about what we do. We don't have an out-of-the-box solution, we have an out-of-the-box, I guess, method for how we do what we do, but we meet communities where we're at, whether we're recruiting retail, or whether we're trying to generate traffic in their downtown and walkability. What's gonna work for you guys is not gonna work for other communities and vice versa. One thing that is very important, however, is to get everybody, all the businesses singing on the same songbook or at least reading on the same playbook, right? We, as, as a traveler myself, who travels all over the state, there's nothing more frustrating than pulling into a cool little town, and the place that I wanna stop and eat is closed on Tuesdays, but even, but Google said it was open. And so now I'm, I pulled off the interstate, I lost that 10 minutes, and now I can't even eat, right? So I've gotta settle for something else. So something as, as small as that, it makes a huge difference for people who might pull off the interstate and experience Dunsmere for the first time. There's also, as I mentioned, the reason I first started talking to Todd is there, I think there's opportunity along the interstates. And we, obviously, topo and, and all kinds of different things that, that go into those, those real estate decisions, but I think you guys have strategic plans and visions for what you want your downtown to be, and, and cities that you'd like it to be like. Well, that's great, and we wanna put a plan together that protects that vision, and we really go after retailers that might tell us no, and might laugh at us at first, but we constantly work on them and constantly build on them. But all the while, there might be some low-hanging fruit to, to increase your sales tax revenue that can then go into potholes and police races and, and fire trucks and all those types of things by landing a gas station or landing a quick service restaurant or something like that. So it's all about creating that unique plan that meets you guys where you're at and makes sense to you, and that's, that's what we do through both of our programs.
Thank you, are there any other questions? Councilman Doish?
Did you hear me?
Yes.
I guess I'll go to the third question first, how do you get compensated for your work?
Yeah, so, so what we're talking about with Todd, what Todd is talking about doing is applying for an opportunity block grant that allows, allows that money to be spent on our services. We have an annual partnership that, that we've quoted the city. Todd has, without a whole lot of background and all this to me, he's applying for this block grant that, that, you know, and Jen, you may know a little bit more about it, so if you do, jump in. But essentially, the way our service works is our, our retail recruitment is an annual partnership. We ask you to consider multiple years because we're gonna start conversations with retailers, brokers, developers, and it's gonna start with, hey, do you know where Dunsmere's at, and do you have an interest in that? And they might say yes or no, or maybe, and then we start working on them from there. We ask for an annual partnership, the, the retail recruitment portion is 35,000. We ask for an annual partnership. The, the retail recruitment portion is $35,000 a year. The strategic vision workshop that Jen is talking about is, and presented on is $25,000, a one-time $25,000. And then the small business support is something that can be done in six months or one year, and that's either 25 or $45,000. Now, what Todd is doing is he's asking, in, in his, in his grant application, he's asking for all three partnerships. Whether it, it, I guess it's yet to be seen of what they would allow and accept, but that's kind of where we're at from a pricing standpoint.
Question number two, we don't need to go into the long history, but the city of Dunsmere owns a regional airport, Mott Airfield. It has been a problem that we have not been able to make this facility a profitable facility. It's got brand-new runways. The FAA has given us a lot of support. And there's any number of ideas what to do with the airport facility itself and the acreage that surrounds it. From Google to, you know, electric aircraft to solar fields to growing cannabis and greenhouses, you name it. Would that be part of the span of your services?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll take that and then Jen, if you want to add. So essentially, we've done, we've done a downtown partnership with about five or six cities in California. One of them is Mission Viejo, California. They have no downtown. They don't have space for it. But what they did do is they acquired a golf course. So the city owns a golf course. And they've asked Jen, they said, can you apply walkability and place-making principles to this golf course? And give our community a place that they want to visit, they want to go to. So, so in one way, when I think about the, the, the airport and what it can be, one thing that I do typically when Jen's not here is I tell cities, the downtown product, you don't think of it as downtown, think of it as place-making. Downtown, for me, growing up in Northern California, downtown is when I go to the south and I see a courthouse in the town square and those are great. But in California, a lot of, you know, a lot of our downtowns don't, don't have that. And so think of this as when we get in, if we get into a partnership, I would first pass it in and her team to say, okay, and, you know, work with the city, but do you guys want to focus on, you know, place-making at the airport and how we could do something there? Or do you want to do that in your downtown? What's the higher, you know, what's, what's the higher priority concern for the community? And then let's, let's put a plan together. We've had a community, Clear Lake, California. They had three different locations that they thought, hey, these could all be good for a downtown. But Jen, look at the data, look at what you know and give us your thoughts on which one would make the best downtown. So from a downtown standpoint, that's one way we can look at it. From a national retail perspective, I'd have to look at, you know, it, it, can people freely come and go to the airport? No problem. Is there, is there property available to where people could put, you know, a restaurant? I, I think that's probably the case, but once I look at the real estate and know a little bit more, I think there's all kinds of opportunities that you can do there and get really creative with it and put a cool brand around it. I think, I think there's opportunity. So none of that would scare us off. In fact, it would probably be exciting. It's always exciting to have. You know, I think in fact, on a call with Todd, we had a conversation, we called it $200 burgers where pilots are getting their hours, they're flying in to your airport and then they stop and, you know, grab, grab a burger somewhere in town. Well, make that closer to them so that they can spend easier and, and, you know, spend more while they're there. But yeah, I think there's a lot of opportunity there. Jen, anything you want to add to that?
No, I, I think that's it. But yes, we would definitely take a look at that and provide recommendations for what we think would be a good fit.
The, the most exciting part of your presentation to me, and I've been in the community for 12 years coming up from San Francisco, is the idea, you complimented us once or twice on having a vision and plans to go with the vision. We really don't. So if you could, in my opinion, if we could facilitate that through you in the near term, that would be a huge plus for the business community and the residential community. But when you flash the Starbucks logo, I think, uh-oh, because a neighboring city actually has the prospect of a Starbucks location. City of Mount Shasta, they're somewhat larger than we are, and it really divided the community. Do we want a Starbucks in our teeny-tiny town? I assume you have the bandwidth to deal with that.
Absolutely. Yeah. And, and that's nothing that, that we're, in fact, Starbucks isn't exciting for many citizens in many communities anymore. Everyone wants Dutch Bros or Dunkin' Donuts, or we turn it to Jen to say, Jen, let's look at some of the downtowns nearby and, and, you know, where I grew up in Rockland, there's a little place called It's a Grind. And it was a great coffee shop and everyone loved it. No one went to Starbucks, they went to It's a Grind. And so we, we want to understand who's going on. That's why I say we're the national experts, you're the local experts. I, I, I almost cringe every time I show what we call the NASCAR slide. Those are retailers that we've done deals with across the country. But it's, it's not, we're not limited to them. Those are not the only relationships we have. And, you know, if this is the most classic example, if a city, if we say, hey, Hooters is a great fit based on the data, the analytics and everything they're looking for. I have cities all over the country, they absolutely do not put a Hooters in our, in our market. But then I have some that say, that's great, let's get one of those, right? So, and that's not to make you guys think that that's what we're going after or we're limited to, but if you don't want it, we're not going to go waste the exhaustive efforts to try and convince them. Look, it's not going to be easy to convince national retailers to come to Dunsmere. So we want to be strategic about that and we want to be in step with you. And that's, that's why you hire someone like us. There's firms out there that will say like, well, let's just go bring anything in, right? Well, no, we're, we're about being part of your vision, even helping you create that vision. And, you know, one of the other big things that come from us, every community I work with wants a Trader, Trader Joe's. Well, guess what? Trader Joe's doesn't want every community, but if you're out there in the community and they're saying, why can't we get a Trader Joe's? Well, guess what? Matt can call Trader Joe's and find out, would they come here? If not, why? And now you've got some ammunition to go, okay, we really wanted that, but they're not coming or they're not coming for 10 years. So if that's the case, what can we get, you know, in its place? Or do we want to wait for, right? So anyways, I hope that answers that question.
Good job. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions?
Good, thank you.
I, I have a couple of questions, just to kind of put some context here. You've been expanding to the West Coast in recent years. Do you know what the closest city to our region that you guys currently work with is?
Yeah, so I have, they're kind of spread out a little bit, but in your region, I've got Fortuna. And I know that's not a direct in your region, but I've got Fortuna, Clear Lake and, and, and I think the closest comparable city is Colfax. Now, I don't, I don't look at comparisons from a a region, although region matters, I look at it more from a size of community, income and stuff like that. And the bones, Jen looks at it probably from the bones in your downtown and and kind of the guts that you would have there to, to make a downtown or form a downtown. But those are the three kind of Northern California. We also work in Manteca, but that's not in your region at all. Those are the three that we're, we're working with right now.
Okay. And then you mentioned you've had a lot of other retailers besides the large national retailers you had in the slide. Do you have a list of, or, you know, just a rough number of number of retailers you work with? I know it's probably constant, the number of retailers you've actually helped place.
Yeah, you know, I, we, we actually do have, so I'll tell you, Lompoc, California, for example, we've landed probably five or six retailers in our three-year partnership, which that may not sound like a lot, but we're increasing their sales tax revenue by about $150,000 to $200,000 a year annually, as long as those guys stay open. Taft, California, 8,000 people down in Bakersfield area. We've landed a grocery outlet, we landed a O'Reilly's Auto Parts, we landed a Jack in the Box and a Starbucks. Now, again, I can't stress enough, I can, I can send you more wins, but I think the important piece is what's a win for them is not necessarily a win for you. And with, you know, some of these cities might have said, man, we'll take whatever we can get. Others have said, if you bring us a dollar store, we're gonna, we're gonna fight them all day long. But some cities say, you know what? I'd like 100, you know, I'd like, I'd like to add 20,000 to $40,000 a year to our sales tax base, whether it's a dollar store, Dollar General or whatever. So I hope that helps. But yeah, we've, we've had a lot of success in California. I'm new to, to selling in California by, in the last two or three years, but we, we've had many communities where we're with them for five or six years, even in California. So so our, our relationships are not necessarily all new in California.
Okay, thank you. And then just a quick question to understand kind of the business model. Do retailers also retain your services to find locations on occasion?
Good question. So we have a, we have a sister company called Retail Specialist. Retail Specialist is a commercial real estate brokerage and that's what really birthed our company. A lot of times, our, our sister company would go into deals and realize that the city had no idea what was going on in the transaction. And so that's, that's how our founders found our company. They realized, well, we need this. We do not, we have brokers that represent community or represent specific retailers on the East Coast, but I think it's about 10 or 15 retailers. But we don't have anyone specifically that we're stuck to, tied to, have to work with, limited to, anything like that. But there's a chance, you know, that if Hollywood Feed ends up moving from Fort Worth to the West Coast, that we would have an end to talk to Hollywood Feed, tell them, hey, you might want to look at this location in Dunsmere.
Okay, thank you so much. Are there any other questions?
Absolutely.
Really appreciate the presentation tonight. Really appreciate the presentation tonight. Thank you for your time and thank you for working with Todd. Hopefully we'll be getting back to you guys shortly once we get this grant sorted out.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Good night.
All right, we have a second special presentation tonight. We have folks from Caltrans here to discuss the Sacramento Bridge through Dunsmere and the construction that will be taking place on it shortly.
I hope you guys don't cut out.
All right, good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Carrie Maltz. I'm a project manager at Caltrans.
Sorry, what was your name again?
Carrie Maltz.
You might need to get really close to the microphone. Really? Carrie Maltz.
There you go.
And yes, I'm here to talk about the Sacramento River Bridge and overhead, but also the Dunsmere Gap paving project. This is the sister project to the southbound, southbound Dunsmere project that we, it's completed and you all are now enjoying some very beautiful white pavement on I-5 going southbound. We will be doing the same going northbound, starting next year. So Todd has been joining us at our project team meetings and he recommended that I give you guys an update. And of course, he's right. So here I am now. I came a couple of years ago to talk about what the impacts would be to the park. But now, just briefly, I'm going to update you because because we're getting close to construction. So I have some team members I want to introduce that I brought with me, because of course I brought my posse. John Hinton is our area construction engineer. And Chris Hanley is from Tolles. He is our transportation specialist that we've hired. We did a little differently this time. Usually with Caltrans, we, we design, we put it out to bid, we pick the lowest bidder and they go to town. This time, because of the traffic that you guys all experienced the last couple of years, we really wanted to bring a contractor on board to, to mitigate it, to work with them, do everything we possibly can to make your life easier. And so that's why Chris is here tonight too, to help field questions. And on the, well, on the, on the Zoom meeting, I also have David Kramer. He's from Welsh Myers. And he is the CMGC, the, the Construction Management General Contractor that we have hired. He's the
His name was what?
His name is David Kramer. And then I also have, I believe Michael Sullivan is online. He is our project engineer. And Kelly Zolotoff, you may have worked with her before. She's, she helps coordinate communications with our local governments. And so in the handout, it's just a brief overview of where we're going to be working throughout the project. The first year, summer of 2022, probably starting in the middle of June, they're going to start doing some preparations for detours, for moving traffic from the northbound lanes over to the southbound lanes, the crossovers. And then they're going to start the white paving from Mott Road up to Pioneer Area. And then they're going to also be closing the southbound lanes on the bridge to start setting up some false work. It will be open again for winter. And then between the Dunsmere Bridges and up to Mott, where it's already concrete, on that outside number three lane, we have a lot of the chain wear. So we're going to do a polyester infill on that. That will last two, three weeks or so and it'll be night work or planned for night work at this time. Then it all opens up for winter, right?
Question, ask a question. We had some concerns about night work last time around. Are, are we going to be a little bit more sensitive to it or? Because I know there were complaints because
No, veterans were jumping out of their beds at 6 o'clock in the morning when the jackhammer went off and they were freaking out, having Vietnam flashbacks. The public was not informed. No, you know, it was totally by surprise. I made one phone call and they stopped until 8 o'clock. But we didn't have that. And, and, I'm sorry, Bruce, but in echoing, there were a lot of concerns. My concern, fire. And you guys say that you haven't gotten contractor. I was really happy with Shay. They asked out there, did an outstanding job. Kind of hoping that they come back. But so you guys doing your thing, you still doing like we did last time. You're coordinating with Highway Patrol, CAL FIRE, everything. And we have that backup plan that, guys, I don't want to have to be evacuated and run into your tractors. You know what I mean? Road closures. A lot of people got to go and, and I've seen, I can't think of a word without cussing. So it's just a cluster, okay? And I don't, we can't with the severity that we have now with fire. I personally take it more serious than I've ever had before, especially sitting here and we're responsible for our people, okay? We can't let, we can't let something bad happen. So we have to be prepared on every aspect throughout every day of this construction. Any minute that could happen. So you promised me that you guys have taken that in consideration. We've been here before.
Absolutely. We are taking consideration. One thing that is going to be different from the last time we were
How much you did talk.
Yeah.
So one thing that's going to be different from the last time that we were here is we're going to maintain two lanes in the northbound direction at all times. So like when you think about fire and how it's going to come, you know, most people think about it coming up the canyon and out. So we're going to have two lanes going in the northbound direction at all times. So that's, that's a bonus over what we had last time.
Appreciate that.
We're, we're still going to meet with all of the emergency services. We're dealing with it right now with both Blackview and Azalea. We've got the Azalea crossing, huge concern over Azalea. We made some changes so we can accommodate emergency traffic. So when we get closer to construction, we'll sit down, we'll, we'll bring in all of those folks, Mount Shasta Fire, your fire partner, CDF, CHP, and we will have a plan put together, you know, in event of emergency. It's huge. It's a big deal now. You know, it didn't, it wasn't that way four or five years ago.
No.
Today it's a big deal.
Exactly. So I just want to make sure that you are aware of our concerns.
Absolutely.
I mean, because it is a different, it's a different day.
No, you're, you're echoing the concerns that we're hearing from Siskiyou County, from Mount Shasta. So so what you're saying is the exact words we're hearing from other people.
I'm a little louder than them.
I don't know.
I just want to make sure.
There was a supervisor who was pretty loud. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, and you're, you're the first stop on the tour. That will be going around to all the board supervisors to Mount Shasta City. And then especially with all of our emergency services, we'll be contacting them.
So one, one comment. On the, you started out on night work is what we're talking about, just to get back to the night work thing. It's a tough balance for us. If you think about our construction and our work we do, night work gives us the most opportunity not to impact the traveling public. So as people are coming through, you know, when we hit anywhere from noon to 8 o'clock, Blackview, it, it closes up because that's, that's a peak traffic. So by working at night, we avoid all of that, the backups and all the traffic coming through town and going down Old Stage and Cantor Loop. So that's the advantage of the night work. The disadvantage is all of the things that you're talking about. There's disruption to the motels, disruption to the residential. Those are the things. So, so it's a really, it's a fine balance for us. Those are the things. So, so it's a really, it's a fine balance for us on which one is the best way to go. And, and I hopefully you understand that.
Oh, yeah. But all the beep, beep, beep was on the other side of the freeway. Now it's at my back door.
Yeah. So the beep, 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 that is Caloosh regulation. You know, we can't really, it's a safety thing. We can't, can't really cut that off. But it, it is the most complained about. I always think, geez, the freeway is going right by, you know, what's the big deal? But it is the, it sounds like you're on the
Well, I apologize for any rock throwers in the past.
Yeah.
We won't have any.
I didn't get hit, so we're all right.
Thank you, guys.
Chris, did you have anything coming on this?
The people in the rest of the world want to hear what you guys got to say, I'm sure.
Acting on behalf of the contractor, Caltrans has definitely relayed to us what they expect for the project and all these safety concerns and how we're helping Caltrans design motor transportation, thinking of two lanes northbound, emergency pull-throughs, all those aspects are being portrayed in the project. So they're definitely taking it very seriously. So appreciate it.
So you're the contractor?
So I'm, I'm a team member with, with Myers and Walsh.
Myers and Walsh?
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Right, thank you.
I'm on with Tolssink. We just did your airport for you, so.
Another question, I guess, while you're up. Just, are you the one that would be orchestrating, keeping our off or on and off ramps open? And freeway the most clear as it can be for major weekends?
Yes, sir. So as we're designing the project with Caltrans, we're setting up staging to keep ramps open as much as possible. That's correct, sir.
Well, there's critical weekends that our economy here locally relies upon.
Right.
And, you know, if you don't know which ones they are, are you certainly being contacted with us?
Fourth of July, Memorial Day, Labor Day, some of those
Railroad days, you know, some of those local is you know, essentially half the weekends in the summer, we're going to need, you know, some work, especially if, if work is not actively being done. I think we need to work on, like, keep, keeping it as open as possible.
Correct. And we have been looking at that in our staging and are trying to accommodate as best we can. There are situations where we get to a point where we have to just move through the summer and some of those closures will have to take place. But say in the first season, when we're trying to get a false work, we're looking at scenarios where we can open up ramps and do things to keep those, to accommodate those holidays.
What he, what, I, I think what he's trying to say in a roundabout way is, don't shut the roads down when we're having this to make money.
Right, I understand.
That's the only thing we got going on.
It's detrimental to you.
Detrimental, that's the word. Thank you.
Are we closing the ramps at the bridge?
No.
Yeah. Ramps will be open.
Yeah, you shouldn't have any issues, you shouldn't have any issues here in town, so.
So Central will be open the entire time? That's great. Is that with the bridge work as well?
We'll be discussing Blackberry eradications along that eastern side too, a little later on.
Okay, moving on to 2023. They moved north from Pioneer to Abrams. And then that's the year they actually replaced the bridge. So the, the southbound bridge side, they moved over to the northbound lanes. They take the deck off, put it back on. We also will be, you have a water line on our bridge and they'll be, we've already been working with Todd and with your, the water guys. And we'll have a temporary line, just a quick little disruption while we move it to the temporary line and then we'll put a brand new water line back in for you. Thank you.
Some of us on council have been talking about this for years, that water line underneath the bridge. So it's a day that's coming.
I do recall, when we did the presentation a number of years ago on the work on the bridge, it was unclear how the park by the river underneath the bridge would be impacted by the work. Do you guys have any update on what sort of river closure you're going to need? People, recreational enthusiasts go along that river, use tubes or fishing certainly. We have a lot of, a lot of our residents go down there regularly basis. Will that park need to be closed in part?
There will be times where we need to close it off from public access when we have the crane setting up the false work. It was about a month, month and a half for setting up the false work, where it'll, there'll be areas of the park that are closed down, not the entire park. And then another month, month and a half afterwards to bring the false work back down. And the, the goal was to get our false work up on the bridge, not on the ground. You may see a crane sitting there through the summer, but it will be open for public access. Well, there'll be a big, huge, we call it a dance floor up under the bridge. It'll capture all the debris, hold all, you know, all the concrete, all the skid steers.
Nothing goes in the river.
And nothing goes in the river, nothing falls on your head.
Great. And then on that note, upon completion, it's, it's likely you guys are going to do some disturbance in the park down there. And it's a very important area for us. We're working on rehabilitating it already. Is there any funding that our KAN or is the contractor aware that there might need to be some work to restore the, the park? If you've got large equipment down there, stayed on the riverbed essentially?
Yeah, generally anything disturb wise, we, we try to put back to the way it was. If we take out vegetation through our environmental process, we do have to plant it back in. Most of what they're doing is not in vegetated areas. It would be right under the bridge. There might be a little temporary bridge going across the river so they can access both sides. And that would be the most disturbed, but we took our biologist down there and showed her the location. It was not near all the vegetation. So if we do
All, all together? No traffic on the bridge for a while?
No traffic on the bridge between April and October.
April and October? Wow, that's long. Traffic is down there on Sol and Dolly.
That'll be on
It'll be on the, the northbound side of the I-5.
Only one side.
Yeah, only one side.
Flag and all that kind of stuff go off, traffic, right?
No, I-5 traffic will be run free. It'll, all the, all the southbound travelers will be pushed over to the northbound side, share that bridge, kind of like what we're doing for the Gap project.
It might be really nice in the future when we do another presentation closer to the project to have maps and have visuals for people. I'm a visual person. And so when you're saying certain things in which bridge, because we have several, it would be really helpful for just communications for general public to have something like that. Thank you.
So there's actually, you guys have the bridge, the steel bridge, it's all, it's got your current water line. There's actually two bridges out there on I-5. So that may be a little bit confusing. We're working on one that's, that's carrying the southbound traffic right now. So we're going to move everybody from the southbound on the other side. So there's actually three bridges.
Three bridges?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's A-100 and then there's yours.
Yes.
North and south?
Yes. And we're working on the south.
Okay.
2024.
But wait, there's more.
There's more. This is way north. This is Abrams to Blackview and we'll be done with the Sacramento River Bridge.
Sweet. Any further questions?
Just not.
Well, I, I think Caltrans does a great job. I do read the local newspaper and we just had a meeting of all the local elected officials in Siskiyou County here in Dunsmere and for the city of weed. Both in the newspaper and at the meeting, there were concerns about diverting mostly semi trucks, but heavy trucks now detouring on Old Stage Coach, now detouring on other routes. The roads weren't designed for heavy trucks. It's tearing them up. It's too much traffic, et cetera, and so on. And the suggestion in the letter was you have a flagman and a barrier and no trucks. I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but I think the point is well taken that I-5 is built for heavy equipment. Our local secondary roads are not.
Marvelous. So jumped up quick. You guys see that, right?
I knew it was, I knew it was coming. It was going to be mine. But so at Blackview, there's a couple of things going on right there and it, it's going to happen on this project as well. So we, we know it's coming. Old Stage Road is, is a, is limited to 14,000 pound gross vehicle weight. So what we're trying to do, it's difficult for us, we work within our right of way, for us to sit on a ramp and tell the public that they cannot use a public road. So what we were trying to do is kind of encourage maybe the county to get the sheriff's department to go out there and pull some trucks over. You know, because it's, it's, it's their road to enforce. We do all kinds of things to discourage people from, we're not detouring traffic. We actually are trying to encourage them either to stay on Interstate 5 or take other state routes. So for us to plant someone out there, it's, it gets a little tricky. We, we did it a little bit on the southbound Dunsmere job. We put, we put CHP out there stopping traffic. We put flaggers out. And we had people telling us that we were violating their constitutional rights. They can close the whole road if they want. In bio rights, they can patrol it and they can get tickets for people who they're, when they're not supposed to be.
Geographically, I think we're the most constrained community compared to weed at Mount Shasta. So if big rigs can't get down I-5, right out the front door here is historic Highway 99. And you start boats on trailers with big rigs, semis coming down the middle of Dunsmere Avenue. I think you're going to get a lot of pushback.
I'm sure you've seen it on the Craigview project when we're, when we're doing that. Boom, people just scatter everywhere. They've got a phone in their hand and it's telling them that they need to go someplace else. And there's different companies that, that have different driving apps that will tell them where to go. Good thing about this job, two lanes in the northbound direction. You know, unless there's an accident, which could happen at any time, could happen today.
God forbid.
Today, you know, it, it should be better conditions. It's going to be pretty good for Dunsmere as far as having trucks under roads.
Thank you.
And I have
Thank you.
And I have to say the nighttime work is really nice. I've been doing the Redding commute now for a couple of weeks and it's so nice that all of a sudden it's all picked up by the time you come through.
Yeah, and you know, I, I actually agree that as much as comes with the conveniences, nighttime probably is the better option for our community than that type of congestion. You can't even get anywhere in the hour.
So we, we try to look at what is on that corridor. We try to avoid motels. We try to avoid residential. You know, like I, I also have, we're going to do downtown White Rika projects. So we're, we're kind of jumping around with, with night work, trying to, trying to avoid the motels. But you can maybe arm wrestle Dave on that one and see how it works.
Hey, I, I think I'm speaking for councilwoman. I say we appreciate your guys' concern and thoughts as far as Dunsmere and looking out for us. And we appreciate that.
We're, we're not here to put you out of business, that's for sure.
All right. Thank you.
We'll come back anytime that you want. With a little bigger notice, I'll have more displays. Keep it in about a week.
Thank you. I, I think just echoing back very quickly to the point we brought up at the beginning of your presentation, which thank you for coming. It's really helpful. I think having some notice ahead of time that maybe we could do a mailer to residents who are going to be very directly impacted, you know, just to let them know, here's the timeline that we're looking at. You know, might, might help people out, knowing that it's only going to be two weeks versus six weeks. You know, that does matter, I think, to a lot of people. So it's, it's easier for us to maybe plan ahead and buy noise canceling headphones or earplugs. I think that would be really helpful, getting closer to the projects, to be able to do maybe a postcard or a mailer to some of those more directly impacted.
Absolutely. Yeah, our, our PIO office can definitely do that. I didn't know if maybe Kelly, David, or Michael, if you had anything you wanted to add?
No, I think this, this is David Kramer, the project manager for the Walsh Myers JV. I, I think you carried, you, you covered everything pretty well. But, you know, as far as true Dunsmere, the, the thing for the community to, to understand is that the summer of 2022 and the summer of 2023, that, that, that middle bridge there, the old, the old 1954 Arch Bridge is not going to have any traffic on it. And then, and then being able to keep the public safe with the construction activities and use of the park, you know, we, we'll definitely try to keep that open as much as possible. But that, that is, that may impact. I know the, the favorite fishing hole is right underneath the bridge. And fortunately, that's probably not going to be accessible.
Okay. Thanks for the warning. For the Fisher guys. Hey Dave, if it's possible, you're the project manager. This piece of paper I have here, could we have
Yes, sir.
Bigger and maybe laminated that we can put it up in the wind at City Hall, letting the people know this is what's going on. And, and then like Juliana said, let the people, informing the people know, like a mailer or something.
How, how big, how big of a banner would you like me to make and have
They made one last time. It was like three feet by three feet and pull it up so everybody could see it. The blind and everybody could see what was going on.
Oh, I was thinking more like 12 by 20.
I like you, dude. But just something so that we can put there, they can see it. We need to let them know now what's going to be happening. So that
Sure.
Cool. Thanks, you guys.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you so much, everyone from Caltrans and associates for being with us tonight.
We'll clap when it's over.
We don't want any planes landing on it.
And move us forward into item four, public comment for this evening. This is a chance for any member of the public to come forward, please state your name and address for the record. You'll be allotted three minutes to comment on an item that is not on the agenda. So you can do anything, generally speaking, or anything that is on the consent agenda for this evening, which is admittedly somewhat extensive. Got all the CDBG micro loan resolutions. And we've got a number of other things on the consent agenda. So you can comment on those or any general items. All of the other action items later on in new business and old business will have their own public comment later. If you'd like to make a public comment, you can come to the podium. Or if you're on Zoom, you can go to the participants tab and hit the raise your hand button. Seen none. I want to have closed the public comment, general public comment for this evening. Before we move into council and staff comments, just like to remind everyone that we're a solid hour and 10 minutes in to our meeting. We've got a lengthy agenda tonight. If you have something to share, certainly do share it now, but let's try to keep ourselves on track and efficient so we can get through everything we have today in a meaningful way. Blake, do you have anything?
Just want to give our shout out to Todd. That's it.
Councilman Deutsch?
The only thing I'd like to say is I hope everyone is aware that this new Delta variant is hitting people even that are vaccinated. So I myself am starting to wear a mask when I go into places around here. I think it's a wise thing to do and I just encourage people to do that. It's a different world. It's as transmissible as a common cold. If you can catch the cold and you're not vaccinated, you've got a good chance of catching Delta's looking for you. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Deutsch. Councilman Aron?
Well, I will be brief. I wanted to express my sincere thanks to the mayor and the staff, especially Wendy Perkins for the successful Lola meeting. Thanks to the Siskiyou Arts Museum. Thanks to the Dunsmere News for the very nice article. Thank you, Shereen. The related item is I was fortunate enough to have the opportunity to sit with Sheriff Leroux and the mayor for the dinner part of Lola. And in that meeting, I learned that the Siskiyou Sheriff's Office has no aircar act at their disposal. If somebody gets stuck halfway up Mount Shasta, the job of the interagency task force is to get ahold of the CHP in Redding and have them dispatch, dispatch aircraft into Siskiyou County. I asked the sheriff, would you be interested in having a helicopter or two? He said, yes, I would. I said, might you be willing to locate at least one of them at Mott Airfield? He said, yes, I would. So my hope is when the city manager returns, he gets ahold of Sheriff Leroux and asks if gets ahold of Sheriff LaRue and asks if he's serious. And if he is, I hope on behalf of the county and the member cities, we at least look at the opportunity. If a fire closes Highway 97, that's big trouble. If we need to do a medevac, that's big trouble. If the county and the city share the cost, I think that's a good thing. So I'm hoping we can take a look at that. But it was a fabulous meeting. I think we all worked together to show off Dunsmere at its best. And good on all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Aron.
I have no updates, but I'm really excited. This is like the first time I've heard the train in like so long. And it makes me so happy.
We're a train town once again. Missed it.
President Barham.
Yep.
Councilman Kasten?
I wanna echo Peter's comment about staff and the Lola dinner. I know how hard that was and how hard you guys worked all the way to dressing up the tables. So, good job. And you guys helped us look good. For that, we're grateful. Okay? And you know who to call next time. I wanna go back and I wanna thank everybody for the cleanup day that we had, the green waste day. It was a good turnout. I'm looking forward to maybe having another one. So, you know, I wanna see if maybe we can even get a trash day. So these are things that are still in the wind. But I do wanna thank everybody that took the opportunity and participated in that. And it was a good thing. This Sunday, we have a concert in the park. I encourage everybody to come out, listen to the music. I'm sorry I'm unprepared, but I don't know what the tickets cost or the exact time.
They're $45.
They're $45.
And that includes dinner.
And that includes dinner. Are there $20 at the gate just for the concert, right?
I don't think so.
Yeah. So I encourage everybody to come out, have a good time in the park at the concert. I want to thank Caltrans for the coming in to give us this update. I appreciate that ahead of time. And I want to also give my shout out to our city manager. My heart's with you, bros. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, could I amend my comment for just a second? Certainly. I too wanna, I feel bad I didn't bring it up, but I too wanna applaud the service and the spirit that Wendy and her team put into that. I think that Dunsmere could not have looked any better. I think that when they talk about Lola's of the future, they're gonna talk about the one in Dunsmere and say, can we do it better than them? And they won't be able to. So thank you, Wendy, and thank your team.
Thank you, Councilman Deutsch. All right. Move forward to committee reports.
Finance committee did meet this past Monday. We did a brief review of the proposed possible changes to personnel. We continued that item to our next meeting. We are also moving the meeting times to later in the evenings now. So it will not be at 4:00 PM. I believe we agreed on 5:00. Yep, 5:00 PM. So our next regular meeting is going to be next, two Mondays from now. I don't know the exact date off the top of my head.
Sixteenth.
The sixteenth. Thank you.
Mondays of weeks where city council meets?
Correct. Yep. And then the other thing is, we started a review of just the general funds at this time, just a general update. But we've pushed that to the next meeting as well. It's, I believe, just gonna be a standing item at every meeting, just to do any updates from Blake on what's happening with the funds in general.
That makes sense. Is it in-person, hybrid, and Zoomed?
We have been doing Zoom. I think now that we've moved it to 5:00 PM, we could probably start doing in-person, depending on how everything goes with the COVID cases. We are fairly high still for our reaches.
We can always do this, Zoom, hybrid thing.
Yeah.
Which I think includes more.
Were there any other committees that met during this time?
No, we didn't meet, but the rate study, I think, as you worked out with Todd, is gonna be a special meeting next week where we'll be presenting our rate study recommendations. So that's what we'll be doing.
Well, I'm reporting on behalf of the Solid Waste Committee, but the real heroes are Todd and Juliana. We had an hour-long Zoom meeting with the Cal recycle team and Diana from Clemmons Waste Hauling. And it was an extremely productive meeting. We're now aware that we, the city of Dunsmere, are part of a countywide response for the solid waste mandates and state law. And the next thing that we need to do is meet with Jason, who is leading the effort on behalf of the Siskiyou County Economic Development Group, with the notion that we almost have the new contract with Clemmons ready for presentation and approval. It's going to be a multi-year contract. We wanna work with Clemmons through this period. Because we are small, the trains are back. Because we're small and rural, we have three extra years. If you're a big city, you need to be going to a three-cann system by the beginning of 2022. Because we're a small city in a rural county, we have until the beginning of 2026. But it involves regional solutions to where does the green waste go? Where do the recyclables go? Where does the trash go? The acquisition of the equipment, the cans and everything. But at the state level, they wanna help us. They want us to get there. So I'm hoping we can meet with Jason before the countywide meetings. The countywide meeting is set for September 21 and 22. And it's on Jason to get everybody together on the same page for the solid waste issues. But it's a beautiful committee. I think if Dunsmere is gonna move forward with visioning and planning, we could be one of the best communities in the county. I love the committee and we're moving.
All right. Thank you so much. Were there any other committees that met during this time? Seeing none. Now, let's move forward into approval of the minutes, the special meeting of July 8.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion at hand? Seeing none. All those in favor approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously. Let's move forward into the consent agenda. Tonight, the consent agenda has a check registry from July 3 through July 30.
Make a motion to adopt.
Well, he's gotta read them all first.
Just the titles, yeah. Once he gets through.
All right. Item B, consent to sign, establish a subrecipient agreement with Siskiyou Economic Development Council to authorize the administration of the CDBG micro enterprise assistance loans. Adopt resolution 2021-11, approving program guidelines for the city of Dunsmere, CDBG micro enterprise. Adopt resolution 2021-12, or sorry, 2021-12, approving formation of a loan advisory committee. E, motion to authorize the mayor and city manager to sign the passenger rail letter and send it to the federal and state representatives and Amtrak. And then F, adopt a resolution accepting grant money for the completion of an active transportation plan for the city of Dunsmere. And I might add, I think that's over $170,000 worth of planning money we'll receive for that transportation plan. So it's no small deal, even though it's on the consent agenda, anticipating consent.
Well, I make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda.
A second?
All right. Motion and second by Councilman Deutsch, who got there first. Any discussion of the motion at hand?
Well, I am not interested in pulling this off a consent, but I did read all the material. And this really shouldn't be on consent, but it's okay. The biggest question I have is, assuming we're successful, all of a sudden, we have $250,000 for micro loans and micro enterprise assistance. How did Dunsmere businesses, and it's for-profit only, nonprofit is not eligible, how did the businesses find out, number one? And is the administration of this going to be the county group, or the city, or both? But in the guidelines, we're supposed to communicate with our businesses through the newspaper, through social platforms, on a first-come, first-served basis. That money's gonna go pretty quick. And how do we assure the many, many small businesses struggling to live in this community that this is fairly and competently administrated?
I can answer part of that.
Beautiful.
My understanding, Blake correcting if I'm wrong, as far as the administration goes, the primary points of contact in the application process will be Siskiyou County Economic Development. Then the city steps up when it gets to the loan committee side with our city manager and finance director. As to how we communicate effectively, I asked the city manager.
And fairly.
And fairly, when we're able to actually fund. And he hasn't been able to, doesn't have a concrete date on when it'll be funded yet. Part of the reason it's here tonight is they can't wait any longer. They need it approved to move forward. It should be in the coming weeks. You are already able to start your application with Siskiyou County Economic Development. The business meeting, long awaited in this town the last six months, has always been hopes, well, it's always been a hope to include news that this is available at that business meeting. So I would say in the next two weeks, let's plan on an event being scheduled that'll announce it. And I'm sure we'll get coverage in our local area newspaper.
Quentin is on Zoom.
Oh, Quentin.
Quentin is on Zoom. Plus, it's ready to go. Please spread the word. Please start applying.
Well, and that's my issue. Do I just go to my business tenants and say, be first in line?
Do it.
That doesn't seem fair.
Tell everybody, tell everybody to start applying. Get the word out. Everybody, start applying. If you have a micro enterprise that are five employees or less, start applying.
And Siskiyou Economic Development Council is also available to assist those businesses as well with the application process. Quentin, did you have anything else?
Yeah, so I'd sort of like to provide an overview of where we're at in terms of the dollars and how dollars are getting out, how everything's getting facilitated. So the grant has been awarded, the contract has been signed. What we are doing right now is called the general conditions clearance. So this means we're going over several different items that the California Department of Housing and Community Development requires before we can start taking applications. And so there's a couple of things I'd wanna state, first of all, in terms of dollars getting out the door. The CDPG program is principally intended to benefit residents of Dunsmere who are considered low to moderate income. And so that's gonna be the first, the first thing we look at. And so this is exclusively for residents who are low to moderate income. So for an individual, a household of one, it's gonna be $39,050 a year. It goes up about $5,000 for each additional member of the household. And so that's a requirement just due to CDPG. That's how the program was structured in the Housing and Urban Development Act of 1974. Now, when we, when we talk about dollars getting out the door, we do have the existing CDPG CV program open, accepting applications right now. And one of the things I would like to ask of the city council, and I've had great success with the city of Weed with this, with council members, and I'll give you guys my cell phone, my email, whatever makes this easier. But we need applications. I haven't gotten the number of applications needed to expend the number of funds. We have hundreds of thousands of dollars available right now. And I've only been able to qualify six applicants so far. I've rejected four, but that's 10 total. So we need to step up our ability to reach out to people because some of the social media posts and the generic things aren't working. What is working is that one-on-one connection that we have with businesses. Being the Small Business Development Center, I've had success reaching out individually and helping clients facilitate that through that. I've had success with a couple of businesses in Weed who were encouraged to apply by city council members. And so I don't want it to seem like it's, it would, it would put a thumb on the scale or make it so someone is more advantageous. Because first, for the $250,000, that's what the budget is now. When the city spends 50% and it shows that it's a successful program, the city can then apply for more from the state. And the state actually increased the limit in the 2021 years, moving forward to $750,000. So we wanna, we wanna show that it's an effective program first and that people are applying. Once we get this subrecipient agreement completed between my organization and the city, the guidelines are adopted, and we establish the loan advisory committee, I will be creating a separate webpage and a separate application just for this program, separate from the existing coronavirus program. And that's when we're gonna be able to start getting people in and applying. And this is gonna be applicable to startups. This is gonna be applicable to people who are looking to grow and expand. They don't need COVID losses for this program. This program is just to incentivize and stimulate business growth in Dunsmere.
All right. Thank you so much, Quentin, Councilman Aron.
Could we have your, could I have your contact information, please?
Yes, yes, please. So my cell phone is area code 530-925-3081. And our website is siskiucounty.org/recovery. And you'll find the FAQ, you'll find the LinkedIn application, some downloadable forms that you need to complete, like a W-9, for example. But if folks need help with this, we are able to help them and walk them through the application. It's a little bit onerous. It requires a lot from people. But once we get things sorted and in line, we can facilitate it. Another thing I would like to say, because it's income qualified, and if you're looking at the income limits and you're saying, and a lot of people were on unemployment plus last year. And unfortunately, just because of the high amounts of the federal plus-up of the unemployment, it does push a lot of people over the traditional income limit. However, there was a, there was a ruling at the federal level that because the federal plus-up, the extra 600 bucks folks got through July and the extra 300 bucks from then on out is a one-time occurrence tied to the pandemic, it's not treated as CDPG income. So we'll be able to deduct that and qualify more people through that. And I'd also remind people that in the next couple of months, there'll be rental assistance coming through and utility assistance coming through as well. So we're unfortunately waiting on the state to process a lot of things. But as soon as they are able to, we're able to get things ready to roll.
One more time on the email address, siskiucounty, C-O-U-N-T-Y.
Dot org.
Dot org.
Slash recovery.
Slash recovery.
That's the website.
That's the website. And the email is recovery@siskiucounty.org. So it's the reverse.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Quentin. Just for the sake of time, I'd like to call to question.
All those in favor approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously. Consent agenda is approved.
Thanks, Quentin.
Which takes us through item nine, which is public hearing. We have no public hearing tonight. We're into item 10, short-term, 10A, old business. We have a short-term rental ordinance 570, first reading. This is the first reading with the removal of the inspection requirements for the pools and hot tubs. So if you all remember from the staff report, well, it's in the staff report, but last council meeting, we removed a number of items. This is the new first reading. We'll be able to officially adopt it at the second reading from next regular council meeting.
One thing, though, I would point out, Mr. Mayor, is that in this situation here, the one change that was made since we talked was the deletion of K, which had some inspection, calling it a public, calling pools and jacuzzis public. And I think that really solved the problem by taking that out. So.
Yeah. Blake, do you have more to say on that?
No, I don't have much more. It's just essentially exactly what you said. It takes away the requirement for the county to inspect.
Are there any questions regarding the staff report? Seeing none. I'll open this up for public hearing, or not public hearing, public comment. If anyone would like to make a comment on the short-term rental ordinance 570, in its current draft form, please come to the podium or go to the Participants tab and hit the Raise Your Hand button. If you're calling in, you can hit star nine. We'll see the same result. See any Blake?
I see nothing.
All right.
No public comment.
Seeing no public comment for this item. I'll now close the public comment window and move forward into discussion.
Dave, you wanna do something there? I'm ready to make a motion if there's no discussion.
Nope.
I think we need to make the right motion.
We do have.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, sorry.
Well, just, um, I read, liked the article in the Chronicle on the Lake Tahoe short-term rental issue. And of course, Lake Tahoe embraces two states, four regions. And I think it's timely we are doing what we are doing because one of the four regions, South Lake Tahoe, has already gone to caps. They are now reducing the number of permits they have issued for short-term rentals. The other three regions are watching it closely, but they are all overwhelmed with residential complaints and concerns. This is changing the fabric of our community. So I'm very grateful to the committee, including Dwight, that got us as far as we did, and that we are acting on this. But I do think if we do engage in visioning and planning between now and January of '22, we need to keep working on this item. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, also, if I could, I, I do want to point out that Louis Dewey was instrumental in working us through this process. If you read the staff report, you can see where after our last meeting, there was a lot of discussions and it was all Mr. Dewey pushing this. And I talked with him today. He was originally concerned because he hadn't learned about the most recent change. And when he did, he was excited and appreciated the fact that we had all listened to him. And I just want to thank him for being kind of stubborn there and working us through this process. I think it's better for his effort.
I move that make, I move that make the finding that the project is exempt from CEQA and that we introduce and read ordinance 570 by title only, and that we direct staff to bring ordinance 570 back for adoption at the next regular meeting.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion at hand?
Do you have to read the actual ordinance title?
What?
Do you have to read the actual 570 title?
You do.
Right. Ordinance-
Ordinance 570, ordinance of the city council, the city of Dunsmere, adding chapter 17.40, short-term rentals to the Dunsmere Municipal Code.
Nice.
All right, any further discussion of the motion at hand? Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Art.
Yes.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Yes.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Yes.
Councilmember Luquezi.
Yes.
Mayor Brian.
Aye. Much ordinance, which carries. Thank you, everyone, for all the work. It's really nice to be at a point where we move along. And thank you for the immense public comments throughout this process. It's really been a community-involved procedure. We'll go to old business item B, discussion and decision regarding the planting of a Colorado blue spruce on the median at Pine Street. Blake, do you want to represent the city manager?
I, yeah, I can't, but I'll do my best. Todd is gonna leave his own. No, I'm just kidding. So essentially, what's being asked of you guys is to, to decide about a planting of a blue spruce on the median. It was brought up a while ago, a couple of meetings ago, to plant a tree in honor. The location is at the median right here on, on Pine Street. The, there are concerns about the species itself, plus the location, but we can get to that in discussion. So the general overarching point is to decide whether to plant a memorial tree in a planter box on Pine Street.
Okay, I think we all have time to read the staff report, the elements of it. Are there any questions from staff on that report?
Questions? No.
I didn't. What page is that in the agenda?
Seventy.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, seventy. Seventy-nine, yeah.
Right after the short-term rental ordinance.
I tore my agenda before I knew it.
Has there been a discussion with the individual who's proposing the tree with staff? And has there been those discussions?
Yeah. I don't know that fully. I have not personally. And I'm not sure if Todd has or not.
I know. I just, I was wondering if staff had a conversation with them prior to this meeting.
Well, Mr. Mayor, having, having quickly reviewed this, and it, and it's not fair, Todd is not here, and I assume Blake never met Patty Hill. And Patty Hill was, Jimmy couldn't explain more fully, but Patty Hill, lifelong resident of Dunsmere, she was known as the village harpist. And for any number of years, after her passage, Jimmy has been trying to create a memorial for her in Dunsmere. And Mr. Striegel and I appeared several times before the Dunsmere Beautification Committee some several years ago. And the beautification committee is now gone, but basically, we could never get to the point of even getting the city interested in creating this memorial. So thanks to Todd, thanks to Brian Wilson, who is extremely close to Patty Hill, now at least we have a little bit of traction. But I have already promised to be a contributor to the memorial. If we could do park benches, we should be able to figure out how to do a Pine Street Plaza pine tree. And so I-
This is questions, not to cut you off.
Well, but, but it's, it's, it's not a fair presentation. I mean, planting a pine tree is one thing, doing a memorial is a different thing.
Understood, okay. There's no further questions, let's open this topic up to public comment. Anyone wishing to come? Yeah, just say your name, address, and you'll be allowed three minutes.
Jim Striegel, 2601 North Old Stage Road, Mount Shasta. Patty was my significant other. She was my sweetheart for the last six years of her life. She was born in Dunsmere at the old hospital across the river in 1939. She has her, two of her granddaughters are online, ready to talk on the subject, and her great-grandson is here also. It, it pained her every Christmas to see a cut-down tree. They would light it up, have to throw the tree away after Christmas, and she always thought they should have a living Christmas tree. And every year, as the tree gets bigger, all the kids that your parents bring them to the ceremony, the kids are bigger too. And after 10 years, the kids are in high school, they've grown, the tree's grown, and the tree has become a living part of the community. There's been talk about maybe putting it in the park across from the brewery. That sidewalk in December can be deadly with ice, and everyone would have to walk down the sidewalk to see Santa at the pizza place. The best location is right there, the entrance to Pine, Pine Street on the median. If down the line, they decide to make a parking lot, you can leave, they have parking lots with trees, leave that one right at the front, it'll be a beautiful attraction to downtown, even not during Christmas, but during the rest of the year. I've already sprung for the tree, I've paid for it, from the nursery up in Mount Shasta, almost $200 for a six-foot-plus Colorado blue spruce, Fat Albert. It's symmetrical, the blues, silver-blue needles are like velvet, it's a gorgeous tree. I was told they grow about 15 to 20 feet tall in that planter. I met with Ernie Lawson, and we discussed it, we looked at the planter. Brian Wilson with Public Works said that he can do a backhoe here, they can dig the soil out, clean it all out. We've got a whole three yards of topsoil ready to come from Suzu Ready Mix in Mount Shasta. It's got a sifted topsoil from the forest, organic compost, mushroom compost. It's got rice hulls to maintain moisture and crushed cinder for drainage and moisture control. I'll be putting bagloads and bagloads of shredded cedar mulch on top of the tree, all around it, to help maintain moisture. And I'll put in maybe five or six big bags of the bark chips on top of that to keep moisture in the planter, and it'll look beautiful with the bark chips. Patty, as Brian Wilson would tell you, he was telling me about events and concerts that she put on in this town that I wasn't even aware of. But I saw her put on more events that I could count to raise funds for councilmen that had cancer, that were away for treatment, raising funds for the Christmas lights, for the bridges, for the Christmas lights downtown. She was a member of the, president of the garden club, she worked with the Towne Dolly Park Beautification Committee. She did so much for this town. She loved the town, loved the children, and this would be a fitting tribute for her to have that tree planted right there.
All right, thank you so much. Our time, we appreciate you coming.
Her granddaughters would love to have their say.
All right, um, we'll keep with-
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you being here tonight. Was there any more in-person public comments?
We was kind of hoping to hear from the kid, that's all.
Oh, that's okay, I know, I, I, I know. You said question. Is this going to go in the median there, where we're also of authorized power to be put in for the Travelers Hotel?
Yes.
Yes, it is going to be, but the location will not interfere with that project.
It's not a back and forth. If you just make a comment, we'll address it.
Okay. That would be my comment.
Thank you. Is there any more in-person? All right, let's turn to Zoom. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. If you'd like to make a public comment, go to the participants tab and hit the raise your hand button, and we'll unmute you.
Go ahead, Ayla.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm sorry that I can't be there. My fiance is there, and as well as my child. I'm actually pretty surprised that he's being so well right now. But I love Dunsmere. I've been going there since I was a little girl. My grandmother absolutely was just heartfelt with her community, and it's actually within generations within our family has been there. So I appreciate all the heartfelt from the community and the appreciation and the acknowledgement for my grandmother. The fact that this is even a part, and it's kind of amazing that I'm sitting here in this council meeting because she used to do this all the time. So I feel a part of the community all the time, and just being and experiencing, and I'm not a good public speaker, so I apologize, but I, I would love this. And I know that the new mayor here really wants to bring back the history and the community and stuff like that. And so this would be a good thing, I think, for the children, as well as just knowing that we are a family in Dunsmere. Whether you've lived there or not, and you've visited, you'll always remember Dunsmere. And having a tree that lives forever would be a good heartfelt situation for, you know, my grandma, because she's gonna live forever as long as we remember her. And keep her name alive, so, but you know, as, as me personally, I do know that there's generations. I haven't looked into the history, but beyond, she was born there in 1939, and it goes beyond that within my family. So I know there's an amazing, a book, I guess, I could look into and all sorts of stuff that if I go to the cemetery, I guess I've got family on family and family that has lived in Dunsmere and has worked at those railroad tracks and everything. So this goes beyond just her memorial, it goes to the history within Dunsmere and the people that build that community. So, you know, I've got my little baby cousin, the youngest one, she's actually on Zoom right now from New York. And the fact that we're all here to support it, and we will make sure, no matter what, that that tree's taken care of too, within our family. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you being here with us tonight.
Thank you.
Do we have one more public comment on Zoom?
Looks like we have a public comment from Stephanie.
Yes, hi, I'm, my name's Stephanie from One Eight Point, New York. I am joining you guys. I'm sorry that I look like this at 11 o'clock at night, but I wanted to also touch on, on my grandmother Patty Hill and how much I mean to, to her and to all of us to have as a place that we can go and see at all times, especially during Christmas, obviously, with all the lights. And I think that this would be an amazing tribute for her.
All right, thank you so much. We really appreciate you taking the time, three hours ahead, to be here with us.
Of course.
All right, one last call for public comment on this item. It's being done. I'll close the public comment window, and let's proceed with discussion of it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would, of the three suggested motions on page 80, I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed location and tree species.
I'll second.
I'll second too.
I might, okay, there's a motion and a second. As far as discussion on the motion goes, I have to say, with all due respect to Patty Hill and this memorial, I am opposed to the location because I, I feel very strongly that the way Dunsmere is trending, for multiple reasons, that Pine Street area is going to be, need to be redeveloped, and I don't know the longevity of the memorial at that location. This goes along, I'm not speaking for my opinion here in council, but just what the city's going to be doing there. I think it would probably last longer in an area where we feel very comfortable, it's in a natural setting, not an urban setting, and it can be maintained for forever. And I'm, I'm not saying that I would, would vote to do that, but I, I feel as if with the Travelers coming online, there's, there's going to be a lot of growing pains in that exact region. And I'd hate to put a memorial that can't last for a century. I think we could find a really good location for it, and I love the idea. That would be my, my thoughts on it.
My thoughts on it. And I spoke to Santa about this. Santa's been coming here for a long time. It's flat. The hill was mentioned. Those don't work in winter time. It's flat. We come from the fire department to the pizza factory, this has been tradition, this is where our family, our, our community comes together, sings songs, parade. Travel's gonna be fine, grow around it. Things can go at the other end. We're talking about an end of the thing for a tree, for a lady who was our hero, for, for as long as it can stand there. So I, I'm, 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 I'm with the ones that say, yeah, I think it's great. I'm with Santa, I think Santa thinks it's great. This has been a tradition, that's where we meet, and to have a tree. I'm the one that's been for the last five years, going out and hustling, getting trees, putting them there. I went through the blizzard one year to please the guy from the Chamber of Commerce in a blizzard, and then it wasn't good enough. So this, and I gotta commend you, dude. You've done your homework extensively. I'm so proud of you, and sitting over here watching you smile as your, your, your daughters are talking, I'm impressed.
May they have a try.
Well, I'm sorry, but I, you are getting a book. We're gonna get you a book, so you have your own book, I promise you that. I, 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 I see that this being a good thing for our town. And so I'm with these guys, I'm voting yes.
I, I was actually going to propose to table the item. I have some serious concerns with the longevity as well. I think it's a wonderful idea. You know, if, if we're willing to table for today, I'd be more than happy out of my own pocket to contact an urban forester. I just want to make sure that it's put in correctly, because if we take a look just up the hill, they put in a number of liquid ambers, which are very beautiful trees, they're great, but they've ripped up the sidewalk, and now the city of Mount Shasta's cutting those all to the stump. I don't want to see that happen with your tree. So if we're able to wait, at least to get a second opinion from an urban forester, so that we make sure that the construction of it is correct, that it's something that's gonna last forever, or at least last for the lifetime of that tree, I, I really want to do that for you. So my, my personal perspective for tonight is a motion to table until we can get a, a second opinion from an urban forester to make sure that the location, the box, everything is, is perfect. So I do have a couple of people that I know that I'd be willing to call for you and pay for that.
Yeah, and so they've been holding a duty for a month and a half in the nursery. They said they can't help it.
Yeah.
I was hoping some, some guys would use one way or another.
You've got momentum going.
I, I love the, the urban forester.
Yeah.
Yes, knowledgeable person, say yes, you're glad the people, a whole extra hole in the planter, roots will go this direction, they won't run this side one, read that assurance, I can stand that.
Yeah.
Because I saw where the sidewalk got buckled by the tree in front of it.
Yeah.
And had replaced the pavement. I think if the tappet goes down, there's a well, an old well there in the middle. Uh, I think if the taproot goes down, there's a well, an old well there in the middle of that planter. But I think the taproot will find its way to the water at the bottom and more will crack out sideways and tear the sidewalk. That's what the urban, that's a professional thing.
Yeah.
She knows the guy.
We've got a couple people.
Great idea, yeah. But maybe though, possibly if anything needs to be revised.
Yeah, thank you. I'll, yeah.
Two things. Uh, first of all, um, to your concern, Mr. Mayor, I do think that by the fact it's at the end of the street there, that even if we had to tear up the rest of it, it could be something. And I'm just throwing it out there as a possibility. Uh, the other thing though is, is that, um, I'm willing to pull my second. If, uh, the first is ready, it would be willing to table.
No, I'm not. I, the, to the mayor's point, if the city of Dunsmere had done any sort of visioning and planning for Pine Street Plaza, that would be something. We went through the whole exercise for the Travelers Hotel and Pike Street Plaza was an afterthought, except for the street furniture, the Pacific Power Transformer that's going at the end. And the late Ann Powers did her best to get that to the rear of the area. But I, listen to Big Dave. It is a gathering spot. It is where we celebrate Christmas. Why cut down a tree every year? And to Juliana's point, this isn't going to be planted in the ground. This is going to be planted in a container, which will naturally constrain how, if it has to be moved five years from now, when we actually have a plan for Pine Street Plaza, okay, but I'm not willing to wait. Patty's waited long enough.
I suggest we call a vote.
Well, are you still seconding the motion?
I'm not, I'm still seconding, yeah.
Okay.
All right, yeah.
I asked if you wanted to and I'll support him going forward here, so.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm going to put this to the family. On one hand, we want to make it happen. Let me, let me.
I think everyone here is unanimous that we want to make this happen.
Yeah.
But we want to make sure that we do it the right way.
I'm with everybody, but I'm also with Juliana. I think that if she wants to get her guy, cause she knows some dudes and, and they have it checked out, that, that's kind of covering our butt and your investment. You know, you, you've already got money out on that tree. You got bark, you got all this stuff. Let's just make sure that this is gonna work. If you guys are cool with that, then I'm gonna second, second her motion to table. So we're gonna have a draw vote here, but it's gonna be probably three to two. So I'm retracting. I want to make it happen. I'm defending your legend, okay? She is a legend.
All right.
Can you go with Peter's decision and still get the urban?
Excuse me, we're not gonna do as much of a back and forth. We'll do it a little bit and I, I understand this.
I already made a point. Could we do that? How about if we make a motion to go ahead with this, get a preview?
It wouldn't be Councilman Art's motion. It'd be a different motion. It'd be to, uh, support this endeavor and come back with more information, which is kind of what we're looking at here.
Okay, let me get a shot.
We have to clear this other one first.
Let's clear this other one first. Um, Councilman Art's made a motion, it's been seconded. Um, could we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Art?
Yes.
Councilmember Doish?
Yes.
Councilmember Keisler?
Can it be amended?
See, no.
No.
Councilmember Lukeyzi?
No.
Mayor Brian?
No, but I think all the no's here have the clear understanding that we're not against.
I will, I will, I will follow up really quick with the new motion. Motion to table the item to contact an urban forester for more information on the proposal.
Second.
And bring this back?
Yeah, as soon as possible.
Definitely.
Yeah. Yeah.
Who's seconded?
Mayor Brian.
Seconded.
All right, um, any discussion of the motion at hand? We also have a roll call vote?
I want to reiterate, as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Okay. No, I don't think she heard you.
We have a roll call, yeah.
Council, Councilmember Art?
No.
Councilmember Doish?
Yes.
Councilmember Keisler?
Yes.
Councilmember Lukeyzi?
Yes.
Mayor Brian?
Also, yes. A motion carries, uh, for and favor, one against.
Can, Mr. Mayor, can we make a request? When this tree is there and when we light it up, you know, will man be there? Yeah, I promise, be there, help me light it up. I don't know.
We could it all sort it out and get a strong memorial in place.
Good job, lady here.
Um, let's move forward into item 11, new business.
Thank you, Council, for your compassion and your understanding and your support, your support, guys.
Thank you. Thank you and your family for being here and.
Bye, New York.
So on a new business, we have item eight. Very exciting. After years of discussing it, we have recommendations from the finance committee, it looks like, to establish a target reserve of 20% for all funds. That'd be the general fund and the, um, for enterprise funds, water, sewer, garbage, and the airport.
So there's a slight modification to the item on the top of the agenda. Cause the resolution actually is a target of 20% for the general fund and 25% for the enterprise funds.
And I can provide more information on this if you'd like, since we had the discussion at finance.
Please.
Okay. Yeah, uh, so one of the items that had come up, uh, in the discussion of the audit, I don't think it was a recommendation or anything from Charlie, but, um, he did bring up that it is good practice for the cities to adopt reserve policies so that it ensures that future councils do not overspend what's in the reserve for items that are not considered emergencies or items that may be considered frivolous. And so what we are proposing from the finance committee is that we approve a resolution, institute a policy that we maintain at least a 20% reserve in the general fund at all times and at least a 25% reserve in all of the enterprise funds at all times. And that we can only dip under those reserves by council resolution. So basically it, we can expend those funds under the reserve level, but we would have to convene, we would have to know the circumstances on a case by case basis.
How would this work in the context of a budget? I guess, in, in considering the next budget, say, there's a tendency, oh, we want to spend on this, we'll dip to 19%. If you councils didn't just say, okay, well, forget that other one, we're gonna improve it this time. Or would they have to, what, what would the procedure look like?
We would have to, by special resolution, have a separate item on the agenda to discuss dipping into that reserve. So we would have the budget itself, but we would also have a separate item where we would have to decide and say, we are okay with dipping into 19% as a separate action item.
Sort of this particular item.
Correct.
It wouldn't repeal the policy.
Correct. Yes.
Obviously, the big question is the airport.
Well, so we don't technically, I guess, cause the airport's not technically an enterprise fund. It's slightly different in terms of the reserve policy. I know that's not.
Well, I think it would apply, but.
It would apply ultimately.
There is no reserve currently.
Yes.
In the airport or the sewer fund.
I thought we had been through this. It is an enterprise.
We went through this extensively in finance committee. The lawyers and.
So anyway, to go back, uh, Blake is correct. It would be the ideal to have a 25 preserve, 25% reserve for the airport. We do not now. So we basically would continue to apply for no match grants and to basically break even with operations and revenues and expenses for the fiscal year.
Which is already the, uh, general policy of the council of last.
Correct, which is already our, our general policy.
You know, it's one of those things where when we get to a 25% in the airport, which I, yeah, exactly. We don't, we won't give ourselves the flexibility of getting back down to zero.
Or.
Without a special, you know, special circumstances could apply.
Correct.
Okay.
So it does offer a stopgap in the future for any of those.
Any further questions? All right, um, I'll open this up to public comment. All right, I see no public comment. I will now close the public comment period and we'll enter into discussion. Does anyone have any further discussion of the item?
I'm, I'm happy to move the resolution with the understanding, the brief discussion of the airport, the new budget format. This format is excellent because here's a little box next to the airport enterprise fund and it's got a zero. So much of the goals and objectives for the next 24 months circle around a budget that stops losing money for the airport and building a reserve. So if, for my two years on the finance committee, this is like a dream. The whole budget process. For my friend Mario Rubino, the treasurer, for him, I'll bet he would say this is like a dream realized. But now we have to do the work. So we've done much of the work around the other enterprise funds. We just have this hangup with one of them and the independent auditor and everybody says, we gotta fix it. We gotta fix it. But I'm happy with the notion of creating reserves.
Are you gonna, you said you were happy with the motion, you're gonna make the motion?
I did, I thought. Adopt a resolution.
You do have to read the number in the title.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm sorry.
Might even name it the.
I would like to move the adoption of resolution number 2021 dash 13, a resolution of the city council of the city of Dunsmere establishing a target reserve for all funds.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion at hand?
Uh, I just want to say thank you to the finance committee. That was a really good discussion around this item. And we were all in unanimous approval for pushing this forward for council consideration.
Thank you so much, finance committee, for getting it to us. Um, so often these good ideas are talked about and don't make it across the finish line.
And good job, Blake.
Should we have a roll call vote?
No.
Councilmember Art?
Aye.
Councilmember Doish?
Aye.
Councilmember Keisler?
Aye.
Councilmember Lukeyzi?
Aye.
Mayor Brian?
Aye. All right, uh, motion carries unanimously. Very exciting. Item B, new business, uh, resolution, um, 2021 14, designation of a voting delegate and an alternate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference on September, uh, 22nd through 24th. Uh, Blake, do you have any update on, um, the conference? Or Bruce, I think you're part of the organization at a higher level.
No, um, they haven't, haven't discussed it at all in our meeting. So it's just, I assume, gonna be a regular meeting in, where is it? Sacramento? Sacramento.
Yeah.
It's September.
It's usually in mayor and vice mayor.
Yeah, that's what I would think. Yeah, my mayor and vice mayor, as long as you're both going, which I assume.
I'm planning on going and I think there's probably a decent chance they'll adjust the in-person side of it.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll just have to watch and see.
Sure. If I hear anything, I'll definitely bring it up to everyone, but. September 22nd to 24th. I move, well, we have to get public comment and all that, so I'll hold off on that.
All right. Any questions regarding that? All right, uh, now open this item of public comment. I see none. I will now close public comment. Uh, let's enter discussion. It's normally the mayor and the vice mayor. I do plan on attending.
Are you gonna go?
And if it's not the person, then I can still do the Zoom, but if I can't.
I move we appoint our mayor and vice mayor.
Second.
That was quick.
And while we're here, I guess, for, we're gonna fight down again, but is, is everyone planning on going or?
Yeah, yeah.
I might not.
No.
No?
No, I've, I've got, uh, I'm almost to the bar, my friend. I'm a short timer.
All right.
I, uh, will probably not be able to get away from work at that point. It's the busy season.
You're a newbie.
I am.
There's been a motion. Uh, any discussion of the motion at hand? See done, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, um, does, does that also distinguish the voting delegates?
Yeah, that was.
Okay.
That's what that is. Mayor, Vice Mayor.
My God, are we done?
We're, I think we're close to on track.
Oh, my gosh.
This is over. Thank you, everyone, for, uh, having such an efficient meeting. I, I do agree with Councilman Art's thought that the importance of the CDBG, um, work needs to be complicated a little further. Perhaps we can have an information item on that it's up and running in a future meeting. Um, so I'll put that down for future meeting, but is there anything else for future agenda items?
Uh, so we were planning to have the city manager, um, review, I believe, as a closed session, uh, at the beginning of the next meeting. Maybe we'll just check with Todd to make sure that that's.
Well, general announcement, uh, we're planning on, if everyone's available, it's time to bring it up. Having a special meeting in the week from now.
Oh, yeah.
Um, specifically to address, uh, the water and sewer rate studies.
Yeah.
In that committee, kind of workshop meeting.
Just to cover that.
The week from today is the 12th.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll find it.
Yes.
Yeah, um, I'm having surgery.
Would you?
I'm getting refilled and everything.
Would you, would you? Yeah, would you?
No, I'm going in the morning.
Yeah. Would, would you still be okay if the rest of the council held the open meeting? Okay.
Yes, um, um, you guys have, I'm with whatever council, whichever way council leans, count me in.
So I'm, I'm fine for a five o'clock workshop next Thursday, just on rates.
Is on rates tonight? Is it gonna be a closed session Saturday as well?
No.
There's no close for that part.
Yeah, it's an open workshop.
Uh, just, just for the layout, so our, our basic game plan now is that we're really constrained in terms of time. And I think Blake can talk more about it in terms of the fact we have to get this resolved quickly. So the idea is that we're gonna bring it before the council next week with the idea in mind of showing you, you at all and assuming that, uh, it goes, that you want to move it forward with changes or whatever. Then we would, uh, plan on, um, having a, uh, a town hall meeting, which would follow up and, and address it. And our whole game plan throughout, beyond looking at the numbers and coming up with our proposals, is that we want to make sure that we can include as many people as possible into the group that understands how this all works and understands that when we say we have to change the rates, we're doing it for this reason and this reason. And I think that's why we were able to get through last time and we're following the same playbook this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Doish. I look forward to that. So we'll do that one Thursday at five. And then our next meeting, um, there's a solid waste contract, I believe, is coming to council.
Yes. It will be. We're just waiting for a city attorney review.
Councilman?
Well, as I do every point in this meeting, uh, future agenda items, our minutes from the last meeting has visioning as bullet number three. It's immensely ironic to me that we get a presentation by Retail Strategies LLC.
We did that on purpose.
And the first thing they do is propose what? Visioning and planning meetings starting in September.
This was the promise beginning of working on visioning. That's through this grant.
So, so we are assuming we're gonna hire a consultant and therefore the city's not gonna finish a survey or anything it's been doing?
They can use the survey as background material.
We don't talk about it. I don't know any of this. All I know is we don't do it.
Well, we, we brought the presentation forward today to show an option of how we could move forward and get some feedback. If this is an option that people are warm to, cold to. I think generally people were warm on the idea of the downtown revitalization and visioning, which we've talked about at a number of meetings and that we're gonna return, uh, Todd, when he gets back, will return with some more information on for us to consider.
So could this go back on the agenda for our next meeting?
Yes, that was the plan.
Well, let's do that then.
It's all assisted, Peter.
Are we good?
Well, really quick, um, so I think we'll need to touch base with Todd about his schedules for his review. I know we were talking about doing a closed session, um, before the 19th meeting. Um, I do have, um, evaluation forms for the rest of the council members to use. But part of the evaluation process is getting a small write-up from Todd about, you know, his annual accomplishments and what he hopes to work on in the next year. So he unfortunately was called away to the family matter. So hopefully when he gets back, we can either keep that date and I can send the evaluation forms with his summary, um, or we may have to push that back a little bit.
And that will be a closed session at the item.
Yep.
I will say his preface to the budget.
Yeah.
Is pretty comprehensive.
Yeah.